Good evening. This is the Select Board meeting for January 17, 2023. Any news updates or announcements from Select Board members? Bernard?
I have two. I can't raise my hand because I'm in my car.
Okay, I'll call on you, Miriam, but Bernard is going to go first.
Okay, I just wanted to say that our Martin Luther King Junior Celebration Event last night was very, very good. I mean, it was an excellent presentation by Ed Larson, excellent performances by Reggie Gibson, as everyone assumed, but also by Jennifer Barber and the choir, the joyful voices of inspiration. I guess the main thing I'd like to say is that beginning, I think, tomorrow, B I G will have a video recording of the event on their YouTube channel. I will check on that, but I'm pretty sure that it's going to be up tomorrow. So for those of you who weren't able to appear in person, that's available for you. And it was great to have an in-person event.
Great. Great things, Bernard. Excellent. Miriam?
Thank you. I have two announcements. The first, I would like to let everybody know that the American Rescue Rescue Plan Act Review Committee is convening for our second round of ARPA funding dispersments. I encourage you to please go to our website. We are taking grant applications from now until February 7. We will be closed at the end of day, February 7. If you haven't gotten your grant application in, that opportunity will have passed. So please go take a look now. We have revamped the application. So please look at it and be very careful to specifically address the questions that we've asked. And I just want to give everyone the heads up that we have much smaller amount, a much smaller amount of money to give out in the second round, a much smaller amount of money to give out in the second round. So please keep that in mind. And the second announcement, and if you have questions, please email the ARPA Review Committee email, which is available on the website. And then the second announcement is that the Brooklyn Commission on Disability is holding an Effective Communication Focus Group on January 23. And if you are, if you fall into the category of needing aid with communication, we encourage you to please join us for that focus group. You can email Sarah Kaplan at S K A P L A N at BrooklynMass.gov to get more information and to register. Thank you, and happy birthday to my daughter, June 14 today.
Happy birthday to her from the Select Board.
Yes, wonderful.
John?
Thanks very much, Heather. Congratulations, Bernard, on a really good program yesterday. What I wanted to spread the word about is a petition. And quick background on this, I think perhaps everyone in Brookline is aware of the literally decades-long effort that we put into replacing the Olmstead Footbridge over the D-line in the area of the Longwood T-Stop. And we did that for a number of reasons, but mainly because in Brookline, we really celebrate the Emerald Necklace, we celebrate Olmstead, we celebrate Muddy River Park. And on that note, there is a petition circulating, which I signed myself today, and I do recommend to others that they seriously consider signing it. You can find it at, excuse me, change.org. If you go to change.org and then just search for Emerald Necklace, you'll find the petition. And quickly summing up what this is all about, there is a meeting coming up in Boston, excuse me, on January 19, where decisions are going to be made about a proposed development that would seriously cast shadows on Muddy River Park, on the Emerald Necklace. And there are laws governing these questions in terms of protecting parkland. And I think even if there weren't laws, the people in Boston would take very seriously the heritage that we all enjoy in the Emerald Necklace and not cast it under shadows during considerable parts of the day and considerable parts of the year. And that's the focus of this petition. So once again, it's change.org. And just search for the Emerald Necklace petition. Thank you.
Any other news or updates? I have one. There is going to be a celebration at the Brookline High School for the Lunar New Year at, oh, I'm sorry, at the Coolidge Corner Library, Sunday, January 22 at 2:00 p.m. If there are no other announcements, John, why don't you make us into public comment?
Be happy to do that. So to those who are here for public comment, thank you for joining us. It's an opportunity for us to hear your perspective on the issues in Brookline that matter to you. A few rules governing this, each person speaking tonight is limited to three minutes. You don't need to use the entire time, but you may, if you like. Please refrain from personal attacks and from addressing personnel issues. Members of the public sometimes raise questions. We're happy to get an answer to them, but would more likely get it to you by email from staff. When you speak, you will have, we will let you know when you have 30 seconds, and we wish that you have your remarks at that time. And if you have anything more to say after you've spoken, you're welcome to send an email to board members expressing your thoughts. Devin, who is first on the list?
The first person signed up for public comment is Shaunlin Jones. You've been promoted to a panelist. Your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Thank you very much. I'm Shaunlin Jones. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct One. I live at 53 Monmouth Street. And I'm also Vice President of the Brookline Green Space Alliance. Now, I happen to plan to talk about exactly the same issue that Mr. Van Scory just raised. We did not coordinate this in advance in any way, but it's a, I don't know whether you want to say great minds think alike or something, but we are literally on the same page with this petition and this issue. Let me give you a little bit more background, because it's more than just a petition here. I think the town of Brookline needs to consider how it will react to the development proposal that's going, probably going forward in the Longwood Medical Area. We're talking about a proposal that you may be familiar with called Longwood Place at 305 Brookline Avenue. The names are used sort of interchangeably by the city of Boston and the developers. It's a major mixed-use development with retail space, residential space, lab space, commercial space, about 1.7 million square feet, bounded by Brookline Ave and Pilgrim Road and Short Street, which is pedestrian there. But basically, the area between the former Wheelock Campus and then Beth Israel Hospital and Emmanuel College, more or less a triangle. Some of the buildings will be, well, one of them at least is proposed at 320 feet, several between 200 and 300 feet. There are five in all. And as Mr. Van Scory pointed out, there are some severe shadows that are going to be cast here. There has been a shadow study. Like all shadow studies, it's complex and the shadows vary by day. But in a nutshell, we're talking about two or three additional hours of shade over as much as five acres, especially in Riverway Park, but also in Brookline and the Carleton Street area, including the Carleton Street Footbridge, Monmouth Court, and Longwood Towers. I'm going to focus more on the park, but there's a neighborhood impact here as well. And it's important to note that much of the new shadow impact will be in Brookline, because there are already shadows from the BU Wheelock buildings that are cast on the Riverway side, Riverway, you know, park side in Boston. Obviously, making the park colder and darker is going to degrade the experience for the people who use it for walking, running, cycling, you know, pushing a stroller or just sitting on a bench and admiring the birds and the scenery. And it's impossible to put a price tag on that. But there is going to be some real financial impacts here. The shadows are going to increase the snow and ice. They're going to make it harder for some plants to survive. They'll probably degrade the masonry and the pathways and the banks of the Muddy River through the freeze and thaw cycles.
You have 30 seconds.
Analysis of this by one of the subcommittees of the Muddy River Project Maintenance and Management Organization. It's not just about Brookline residents. It's about commuters, students, and workers who use this park space. Remember, the Emerald Necklace is not just a Brookline park. It's a regional historic resource. People commute through, they get off at the Longwood T-Stop. And what I'm asking is that the town of Brookline try to step up. This project still could be modified to reduce the shadow impacts. But the city of Boston is going to receive, according to the developers, $7 million to offset the negative impact on the Muddy River Park's Emerald Necklace in Boston.
You've reached them.
There's clearly a cost to having these shadow effects. Brookline is going to experience those costs and snow and ice removal and park maintenance, too. And I think the Select Board needs to step up and begin a dialogue about the project and particularly about, you know, getting an offsetting payment if it goes forward that would compensate Brookline for literally the damage that this will do to the Riverway Park sections that are here in the town of Brookline, including the Carleton Street Footbridge. We've invested millions of dollars in that. State, local, and federal governments have invested almost $100 million in improving the Muddy River and restoring it, reducing flooding and beautifying it. So let's protect that investment and, you know, make sure that this project doesn't do too much damage and at least we can mitigate some of it. Thank you very much for your attention. Be happy to send more information or answer any questions.
The next person signed up for public comment is Michael Alpern. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable, and your three minutes will begin.
Thanks, Devin, and good evening, Select Board members. I'm Michael Alpern, Executive Director of the Brooklyn Housing Authority. I wanted to come before you tonight just to thank the town and various departments and highlight the great work of many town employees. As I believe this entire board knows, but just to make sure we're all on the same page, the Brooklyn Housing Authority at its 50 Pleasant Street building suffered a really significant flood and some electrical damage at its 50 Pleasant Street building on New Year's Eve. It was certainly not the way I or any of our staff intended to spend New Year's Eve, and it was certainly not the way many of the town staff intended to spend New Year's Eve. I, from Cheryl Anne Snyder, have a list of everyone involved in the emergency response. And I just want to say I was blown away. Been involved in emergency responses in Pittsburgh, Boston, New York City, all in buildings even larger than this in some circumstances. This was the best treatment that I've ever seen for residents, for our staff, and it was just terrific to work with various town departments. In particular, I just want to highlight for this board that the Town Administrator Chaz was on calls throughout the weekend coordinating various departments, and it was terrific to work with you, Chaz. And I want to just note that Lieutenant Casey Hatchett came back from her vacation early to help us in the midst of the crisis. Cheryl Anne Snyder was on scene probably for 100 hours that first weekend, but starting the night of the flood. I just want to also highlight the work of Sergeant Keith Lacy in the Police Department and a younger officer, Chris Rodriguez, who were just terrific with residents staying for anything needed. And then also in the Fire Department, Chief Sullivan, obviously, and Chief of Operations Colin O'Connell, and Lieutenant Dave Nelson, who were all on scene. Dave Nelson multiple times on New Year's Eve. It was just terrific. Lastly, just Dan Bennett and the Building Department being available to make safe decisions about where to house residents. And I don't think I can emphasize enough, people's lives were at risk, and I was really impressed seeing the response of the town's various emergency departments, Cheryl Anne Snyder coordinating everything. It was really effective, and I hope this board recognizes this. I'm happy to send you the full list of the 19 CERT volunteers, the 13 Fire Department officials who were all involved, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, and the day after. I didn't want to take up too much time, but I really think there are some town employees who went above and beyond on a holiday weekend, really helped BHA residents, and we are really, really grateful to have such great partners to work with. So thank you.
Chaz, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in. Thank you so much, Michael, for that. And we really appreciated your cooperation and coordination as well with your team, working with BHA to make sure all those people were safe. I just wanted to briefly share, oh, Devin, can I share my screen real quick? Because I wanted to share that list that Michael mentioned and put it up on the screen so that everyone watching has a sense of just how many people contributed on a holiday weekend across multiple different departments. So on New Year's Eve, you know, look at this huge list of people who came out and then were directly involved. All these people came in, coming out to be on the scene. You know, each one of these people played an incredible role. And it's my hope that as we continue to work through that, we have the chance to thank you all individually for the work that you've done. Again, these CERT volunteers who came out on scene, New Year's Eve, the Fire Department response with the four medical calls, Dave Nelson and James Clinton staying on overnight detail, really incredible work. The Health Department, with Sarah coming in as a huge leader to ensure the safety and well-being of the residents. All the amazing work that the Police Department did, again, to highlight Acting Chief Jen Pastor and Lieutenant Casey Hatchett's leadership in making sure that these issues were appropriately addressed and resolved and that people felt supported by the police, which was a huge help there. Again, the just large number of firefighters, the immediate response of Amanda Hurst at the libraries and all the library team, opening the Coolish Corner Library on a holiday to ensure that people who needed to go somewhere warm and dry could go there. And this massive list of CERT and MRC volunteers, really just excellent work going door-to-door, making sure that all of the people in this building were accounted for, were safe, that the people who needed to be transported away could be transported. They emptied out, you know, rotten food in fridges. They ensured that they had, you know, new food. The MRC team ensured that their medical needs were taken care of, which is particularly important in this vulnerable population. And the Fire Department team that handled the details, again, excellent work just across the board. It really does take an interdepartmental effort to handle disasters like this. And the town of Brookline, you know, I would say this team, this group of people led by these incredible department and division heads did stellar work in this. We were very lucky with this disaster. We had favorable weather. We had favorable external factors like the limitation of the damage. It could have been worse, but it was due entirely to the response of the first responders that the situation was resolved as quickly and favorably as it was. So thank you to everyone on this list. Thank you, Michael, to you and your team. And it just makes me really heartened to know that in disasters like this, our team is ready and able to quickly respond to the issues at hand.
May I reclaim 15 seconds of my 30 seconds just to say one more thing?
Of course.
Just briefly, I think this board knew a lot of the details that transpired during the crisis phase. I just want to let everyone know that of the nine households who had to be relocated due to water damage in their unit, eight have been relocated to other units in the building. The one other resident requires a handicap accessible unit, and we're working on making that available in early February. And none of this affects our timing or financing or construction schedule to redevelop this building, 50 Pleasant Street. It has received low-income housing tax credits, and you will start seeing construction commence in March. And we hope this doesn't happen again, but obviously, it's great to know that the town is such a terrific partner and has such a great emergency plan and response in place from various departments. We're greatly appreciative.
Thank you so much, Michael. And thank you to our Town Administrator for keeping the Select Board in constant update about what was going on.
At this time, there are 20 attendees. No one has used the hand raise feature or Q and A to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Which means we get to go into miscellaneous. Okay, let's take the meeting minutes from our January 10 meeting first. If you will recall, there was a town meeting that evening, so it was a short meeting. Any edits to those minutes before I move them? Then I will move adoption of the meeting minutes. Some of you are on mute, so just make sure that you're not muted. And I'll call the roll. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes from our January 10 meeting, please say aye. Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Is there someone that wants to make another public comment? Devin, can you look into whether that person? Okay. Let me know if that person wanted to make public comment, and we will serve us back after we remove the miscellaneous.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will, I'll read off the miscellaneous, and then I will move to adopt it and then call the roll. I move approval of the application for 1061 Beacon Street for a change of lodging house agent from Sa Prat Nahal to Yuzon Yang. Question of approving the application for 1077 Beacon Street for a change of lodging house agent from Marissa Broom to Son Yoke Park. Approving the application for 89 Marion Street for a change of lodging house agent from Darvin Aviles to Ludwig Karanza. Approving the authorization to hire request within the Engineering Division of the Department of Public Works for a civil engineer. Accepting the following annual fire provincial prevention public education grants offered and approved by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety to enhance our community risk reduction, CRR initiatives. That's $6,781 for student awareness of fire education, otherwise known as SAFE, and $2,677 for senior SAFE. Approving the contract for the fiscal year 22 Emergency Management Performance Grant from MEMA in the amount of $21,500 to be used in a variety of goals, primarily community resilience and planning. Accepting an $800 sponsorship from the Brookline Community Foundation for the annual MLK Day event to be held on January 16, 2023, requested by the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations and Martin Luther King Junior Celebration Committee. Approving the following appropriation transfer within the DPW Division, $190,000 from personnel salary savings to $110,000 to motor equipment, equipment repair, and $80,000 to motor vehicle supplies. And finally, approving the parade permit for the BAA's 127th Boston Marathon to be held on April 17, 2023. Any, Bernard?
Yes, if you don't mind, I would like to just thank Brookline Community Foundation for the $800 sponsorship of the MLK event. Yeah, this was just one of many monetary and other contributions that enabled us to pull together a really high-class professional program. You know, we got a Pulitzer Prize-winning author. We had a 35-member choir, and of course, we had Reggie Gibson, who is now becoming a nationally recognized performer. But, you know, we were able to provide not a large sum of money, but sufficient funds to bring those excellent people to the event. And the Brookline Community Foundation's contribution was an important part of that, so.
Great. Yes, I am sure the whole board is very appreciative of these gifts, especially from our community partners like the foundation. All those in favor of the miscellaneous? Please say aye. Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Our regular calendar, we've got a couple of licensing issues. So who do we have on behalf of? Is it Cubist Circle? Okay, we will skip that item and go to the agenda item number six, liquor license, change of manager and change of officer. Who do we have representing? Is it WBUR?
I'm John Webster. I'm the proposed new manager for the liquor license of WBUR.
Okay. Do you want to just kind of give us the lay of the land? Do you have experience in this? How long have you been in the industry? Do you know our rules and regulations?
So yes, I'm familiar with the rules and regulations. I've been operating food service establishments and higher education since 2005. I've worked at Caltech and Syracuse University, namely, over the period of time, and I reside here in Charlestown now.
Excellent. And what are the hours? I thought this was a specialty place.
So I believe this is for largely catered, catered events function, so there would be special events.
Okay. Bernard, your hand was up. Was that holdover?
That was a holdover, but I do have a question or maybe just a comment. You know, this is a facility at BU campus of a lot of young kids, young students. And I know that BU has been very responsible with respect to controlling the distribution of liquor at these events. I just want to ask you to give us assurance that, you know, you have dealt with situations where there is a possibility of students participating in events like this and, you know, type of controls that you would exercise. I know most of these events may be for adults, but, you know, the issue is still there.
So that is correct, largely for adults. We, so I should be clear here. I am an employee of Aramark. We have our policies and procedures in place as our bartenders card an ID. If there is anybody in attendance that is underage, if a single person is underage, we card an ID every single person. So largely, you are correct. These are private parties where, you know, adults get together and have a drink or two. There's security on the buildings to ensure that that is the case. But yes, we have TIP certified managers. All of our caterers have gone through appropriate service training to ensure that when they serve alcohol, it isn't a safe manner.
Okay. So do we have somebody who wants to speak or not? I'm very confused.
No, nope.
Okay. Um, this isn't a public hearing, so we can move to vote the language, any discussion, before I propose that we do that. Okay, I'm going to propose that we approve the application of a change of manager of record from Joseph LeChance to Jonathan Webster for Trustees of Boston University Doing Business as WBUR at 890 Commonwealth Avenue. All those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
My, John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we also need to approve the application of a change of officer from Gary W. Nixah to Martin Howard for Trustees of Boston University Doing Business as WBUR at 890 Commonwealth Avenue. All those in favor of that, please say aye. Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you so much, Jonathan, and best of luck.
Thank you all. Cheers.
So circling back to item number five. Chris Coleman, if you want to unmute and give us Chris Coleman, if you want to unmute and give us, uh, just a little overview of what you're seeking from the board tonight.
Hear me, folks.
Yeah.
Again, okay, my name is Chris Coleman, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. That's Z and L Restaurant Inc. It's going to do business as Cubist Circle. Uh, with me is, uh, Zhang Wang Zhang. Uh, she is going to be the owner-manager. It's approximately thousand square feet at that location. It's a two-twenty Washington Streets. The, uh, the zoo vegan kitchen is the, in that location present. Uh, there'll be sixteen seats, uh, provided occupancy is going to be twenty. The, uh, the square footage of the place is about a thousand square feet. Uh, the proposed hours are from eleven A M to eleven P M. Uh, um, actually, it's eleven to ten on Monday through Thursday, Friday and Saturday will be eleven to eleven, and on Sunday it'll be twelve till ten. Um, menus are ve- very varied. I was just going over with it, and, uh, uh, Szechuan style is, is basically a good way to look at it, but there's, uh, sushi, meat, seafood, uh, everything that you want will be there. It's kind of a so, so kind of a sophisticated menu. Um, the proposed manager, uh, is would be here. Uh, she has excellent restaurant experience, the co-owner and operator of the Cubist Circle in South Waymouth, twenty eighteen. She's a U S citizen. Uh, she'll be there forty hours plus a week. Uh, we're also looking for an entertainment license as well. Nothing more than pre-recorded music and a couple of televisions, uh, but that's really it. And if you happen to answer any questions.
That is music to my ears. Ba dum ching. Um, any questions for this potential applicant? I think it's pretty straightforward. I am excited to have a Szechuan option. Um, any objections for me to read the, uh, vote language? Okay. So I will move approval of the application of a common Vic for Z and L Restaurant Incorporated, doing business as Cubist Circle at two-twenty Washington Street. Hours of operation will be Monday through Thursday, eleven A M to ten P M, Friday to Saturday, eleven A M to eleven P M, and Sunday noon to ten P M. Seating will consist of sixteen inside seats. All those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And finally, move approval of the application of a new entertainment license for Z and L Restaurant incorporating, Incorporated, doing business as Cubist Circle at two-twenty Washington Street. Entertainment will consist of radio, recorded music, and televisions, Sunday through Saturday, eleven A M to eleven P M. All those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Marion?
Marion and Nori say aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Best of luck, and let us know if you need outdoors, uh, dining options. We
Do everyone.
Considered that from time to time. Okay, next up is an update about the Driscoll School. I see Matt Gillis and Tony Quigley. Who wants to go first?
Um, I, I was, uh, I think we have, um, Leftfield joining us shortly on the, um, they have the presentation, so I'm hoping that we have them here somewhere because they're the folks making the presentation for us.
Okay.
But, uh,
We see Jim Rogers or Adam Keen in the waiting room?
Well, while we're looking for that, and by we, I mean Devin, um, why don't I move, um, reappointment for Alan Christ to E D A P? This was the last agenda item, but I imagine it should be fairly uncontroversial because it's a reappointment. Um, any objections to taking this out of order?
No, because I don't actually see, uh, Leftfield in the participant list right now, so we're gonna, I, us, hopefully Matt or somebody can ping them.
Okay, I'll get a little creative. Um, why don't we do this, since I didn't have a time associated with it? Um, I will move, uh, reappointment for Alan Chris to E D A P for a term expiring in twenty twenty-six. All those in favor? Or, oh, Bernard, did you want to say something?
Uh, yes, I, I'm, uh, going to vote, uh, to reappoint him. Uh, I just would like to make a comment that, uh, in his application, he talked about accepting the, um, M B T A, uh, uh, communities, uh, guidelines, uh, uncritically, and I think that I hope that he would, you know, look at those, uh, a little more critically and see whether, uh, they create problems for Brookline in terms of, you know, our goals and the type of community, particularly along the Harvard corridor that, that, uh, you know, we have, so. Yeah, I'm not, uh, you know, questioning his application or anything. I just wanted to make that, make clear that I think that that needs to be looked at a little more carefully. That appears to be his application.
Okay. All those in favor of reappointing, uh, Alan Chris to E D A P? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye, and I do want to mention that, um, uh, Maria Morelli made a very interesting presentation on the Harvard Street card, if you're not, you should take a look at.
Didn't she make that presentation before us?
He's going to.
Oh, going to, right, okay, I've seen it from, from the tab.
We, we had not, we had a presentation in April two thousand twenty-two.
That was from Cara Bruton though, right?
Was it Cara?
I'm pretty sure that was Cara.
Heather, you're on.
Uh, yeah, sorry. Trying to do two things at the same time. Um, okay. Apparently we have public comment. Um, do we have Leftfield? Yeah?
I just reached out to them, and I think it was because they, they, they thought this was going to go a little later, but supposedly they're coming on now. I don't have the presentation materials. They do, otherwise I could present it, so.
Okay. Uh, why don't we take Scott's comment, and then, uh, if we don't have them, I'll think of something else.
Hmm. Hello, members of the psych board, and thank you for the opportunity to, uh, comment. I, I, uh, hate to think I'm filling time, but I'll take the time that's available. Uh, I'm commenting briefly on the, on behalf of the Driscoll School project, as I expect you'll hear shortly, I hope. Um, construction of the new Driscoll School, which was, um, approved by town meeting and the voters in twenty nineteen, is finally nearing completion. The kids are hopefully expected to start using it in the fall. Um, I look forward to the time when I don't have to appear before you on behalf of the Driscoll Project, but instead on behalf of your school construction, and then the project after that. Um, you're scheduled to vote tonight on the use of Toronto flooring at the new Driscoll School. Um, I, I believe this is a routine change order by the Driscoll Building Committee for an expense which is within the approved budget of the project. Um, that design's decision wasn't taken lightly because it does affect the move-in date for the new project, um, but I've discussed this with the Driscoll Principal, uh, Mr. Euclid, and he feels that using flooring, which will bear well and continue to look good under high traffic in the main entrance school of, uh, uh, main entrance areas of the school is important. Um, and as, and as I understand it, the, uh, the change, uh, will also include color features to allow wayfinding, uh, which is to say, will allow students and visitors to the school to find their way around the building more easily. Um, I believe our public schools are resources for the community. The main entrance to the new Driscoll is right next to the vibrant Washington Square community, uh, the commu- commercial area. Um, and there is a huge opportunity there to integrate community events into, um, you know, between the school and Washington Square, and I do hope that the flooring in the area puts Brookline in a good light. You can stand up to the public lot use that, that I'd certainly like to see. Uh, and, uh, as I think you've also heard, the, the, uh, vinyl alternative is a plastic product. There are members of our community who feel very strongly we should be using alternatives to plastic wherever possible. Um, so, uh, you know, without, without wasting too much of your time, uh, the flooring here was part of the original project, which was approved by the voters, and the expenses are within the budget. I hope this is a, a, a straightforward decision. Um, I hope we don't have to put the school and the community to the inconvenience and disruption of a floor replacement in twenty-five um, years or so, and we all know what the floor looks like before it gets bad enough for it to be replaced as well. Um, and, uh, I just want this to be a, a, a good example for, uh, for folks who come to visit the school. Thanks.
Kate Paperman?
Hi, uh, I would like to comment based on an experience I had while I was a member of the zoning board of appeals. Uh, during a hearing where the Driscoll Pop was being approved for special permits by the Board of Appeals. Hold on, I'm going to try to get myself in focus there. Okay. One of the things which the board considered was the design of the school and the overall look. We were told that in the presentation, there had been sunshades, and the picture we saw of the building were sunshades, which would have reduced the entry of heat by the sun into the building, but that they were removed because of cost. The cost was about seven hundred thousand dollars. Thus, an environmentally friendly step was removed from the school. Yet here, what is being proposed is a and the, an aesthetic benefit, which I object to when previously cost reasons were given for an environmental benefit, and I will be interested in finding out in the presentation if those sunshades were put back in, and if what, and if not, why is flooring being prioritized over sunshades? Thank you.
Do we have Leftfield yet?
Yes, we have Leftfield. We have, Tim Rogers has joined us here.
We're on, Heather.
Excellent. Uh, do you need privilege to, uh, share your screen?
Yeah, so I'm looking for Andy. Andy's, uh, been on. Has Andy, Deshane's been made a panelist? There he is. So if we can give presentation skills to Andy, we'll take it from here. Thank, thanks very much, Heather.
Sorry about the confusion, folks, but well, we're, we're set up now. I apologize for that. I think, because we thought this was going to be on a bit later.
This isn't the school committee.
Uh, Andy, if you have presentation skills, great.
I do. Right, so I'll, I'll take you through the first part of this. Uh, this is right from the, uh, building commission, uh, presentation that we did last week. So you'll see s- a lot of those, the photographs and some of the other graphics that we did are now a week old, and there has been a lot of progress made, but just the same. Here we go. So, uh, this is a rainy day, uh, drone photo taken, uh, last week of the roof of, of Driscoll, so Washington Street is to your left-hand side. Um, so you can see the progress there. We're, we're this close to being done with the roof, uh, the major part of the roof. It's, we've had off and on wet weather for the last, uh, two weeks now, so we're still trying to get it finished. Looks like tomorrow may be the day, so that's looking good. So good progress up on the roof. Um, the building is really pretty dry at this point because of that, so we're making, we're, we're moving along. Uh, some, just some shots of the outside of the building. Uh, window installation is going well. Um, I'll talk a little bit more about that when I get to the scheduled piece of that. The masons are also doing very well. Um, and making, I think, good progress, uh, all the way around the building right now. Uh, they're on, they're on the, the, the old side, the, the old school side of the building right now, um, and sort of getting ready to finish things, this thing up in the next month or so, uh, in terms of masonry, so looking good. Uh, the image on the left is the northeast view from Westport Terrace. So you can see the windows going, that are, that are all in. The brick is all completed there. We've got, uh, phenolic panels still to go, but those are in production and in good shape, so we're making progress there, and, uh, the other photograph is just sort of a close-up of a lot of pop-outs of, of the, the large windows and the brick. Interior is doing very well. Uh, the painters are in there. We're hanging ceilings as of this week. A few shots of, uh, just the progress in there, but really, uh, a big transformation between, uh, the last couple of weeks and the next couple of weeks. Quite a bit of work being done. The, uh, the drywall crew has, I think today they had thirty-four people in the building, so they're really, um, making some great progress, and like I said, the, uh, the ceiling crew started yesterday and has, has already, um, done well. And the painters are in there following behind, uh, all these folks. We do have a mock-up room, so we do have one room that has been, that was painted, um, and the, the full ceiling in there. There's also, uh, the light fixtures are in the, in the, the so-called summer beam, so we can look at some of those details. All that's been looked at and approved. So the, the mock-up room did what it needed to do. It, it created a lot of conversation, but good, good conversations and good decisions out of that that now can be spread across to the rest of the building under construction. Uh, my piece of this pro- of those, of this, uh, presentation is always schedule, um, uh, up, up at the top here, so the project schedule is stabilized. That really just means that while there's a little push and pull every week, every month, uh, we're looking at the same construction, uh, substantial completion end date of, uh, of January fifteenth that, that we've been seeing for a little while, so that's good news. Uh, I think we've got a, we've got a path to get to the end of this thing. It's going to be a, a, uh, it's going to be a, a road race all the way to the end, but it'll, it'll, uh, but I think everybody knows how to do that, so. A bunch of milestones have just happened recently, getting interior framing done in the last part, Area B of the building. Like I said, the mock-up room has paint, ceiling, and lights. Major equipment was moved in about a month ago and has now been, um, a huge effort to get all that stuff connected and inspected and all that good stuff, so that's moving along very well. We've got a good relationship with, uh, with inspectional services. We've had lo- lots of inspections happening and routine, uh, walkthroughs on a, on a weekly basis to make sure that we're keeping up with inspections. The exterior envelope, uh, the windows, a, a month ago, I had, I had reported that, you know, the, the window installer was moving a little slow, and we had some concerns about, you know, wh- which way that was trending. Uh, even with the holidays in December, um, that story has changed. This, uh, the window installer has been doing a much better job. They've, they're staffed up. They're working some Saturdays. They're, um, where they need to be right now, so they're really, they've really done well in the last month, uh, to sort of get themselves back on target and, uh, and be working right behind where the masons are, so that's looking very good. And same thing with the masons. This is not a production project. It's a, it's a fussy sort of exterior, uh, masonry job, but they're, uh, doing very well. And, uh, they've been getting some, some high marks from everybody involved, including the architects. So, um, windows looking good, masonry moving along, and like I said before, the roof, uh, in Area B, the last piece of that is finishing up this week. Interior, it's funny to look at this graphic from a week ago because it's really out of date now, uh, with this, the, the speed that the, uh, the drywall has been happening. Um, there's been quite a bit more that's been installed. Um, and they've got a, just talking to the drywall foreman today, he's got a great, a really good plan, working very well with the other subcontractors to sort of march methodically through the building and get all this, uh, get all this work done, so feel very positive about the work that's been happening, both on the, uh, the mechanical electrical plumbing side of things, but also the drywall, uh, team has been very, very, um, efficient and organized. It's been nice to see. It's not always like that. So with the ins- the, the trend on the inside has been, uh, very positive. Generally, we've been running a little bit ahead of time. Um, whereas on the exterior, we've been, you know, we've been, had some challenges, but we're doing well now. And that's sort of the schedule piece of this that I galloped through. Uh, Jim, you want to take the budget?
Sure, so, um, this is the second page of the, uh, project budget. Um, you can see the total budget equals a hundred and sixteen point, uh, the original budget was a hundred sixteen point five million. To that, we added, um, a second funding of four point nine for the geothermal, and the overall funding included the feasibility studies, a hundred twenty-one point four million. Of that, um, we have, um, there to the left, we show the status of our contingencies, and we have four point six, uh, million dollars, uh, currently remaining in the cont- contingency shown on this report here. One is the construction contingency, one is the owner contingency. They're both kind of fungible to be used with one another. One's more for hard costs and one more for soft costs. Um, but in total, there's four point six million. Against that, um, there are some, um, pending, um, costs. there are some pending costs that have not been fully negotiated. They're still kind of hanging out there to be negotiated. There's some pending ATPs, which are some pending change orders. A total of thirty-one thousand eight hundred. There's some estimated changes that are still making their way through the system, which total five hundred six thousand. And there's some furniture fixtures and equipment overage. That was a rather conservative number of two hundred. I think that number is now closer to zero. But to be conservative, we left it at two hundred for now. That's seven hundred thirty-eight thousand for the pending changes. When we take that away from the four point six remaining contingency, that leaves about three point nine. If everyone sees that at the bottom of the left page, three point nine remaining contingency, which is actually a very good number. If I took five percent of the remaining fifty million left on the contract, that would tell us we need two point five million in contingency at this point to be actually still as a conservative number. Instead of two point five, we have three point eight million. And this is after, by the way, the the Trazo numbers within those change numbers that have already been committed. So we have three point nine million left in contingency after accounting for Trazo. Does anyone have any, before we get to Trazo, our general update, as you as you saw from Andy, we're in very solid shape from a schedule perspective. We're in excellent shape from a budget perspective. Are there any more kind of status questions with the project before we talk about Trazo specifically? And I don't know who could help us, but Adam Keen's actually trying to get on as a panelist as well. So if someone sees Adam Keen's name, that would be great to let him in. But any questions from the board on on project status for Driscoll?
Bernard has his hand up.
Hey Bernard.
Hey Jim. Yes, I'd like to ask this question separate from the Trazo issue, and that is, you know, whether we are installing the sunshades that were mentioned earlier. And if not, you know, some explanation of why not, other than cost, if there are any, and the impact on the energy efficiency of the building of not having those.
Andy, any comment on the status of the sunshades?
I'm not aware that they're in the project. No, I hadn't. That I think that predated me, so I'm not sure about sunshades.
My recollection of this, if I may, and it's it's been quite some time since that was considered back in design. There was a very extensive value engineering effort.
Yes.
And there were many, many items that were considered and were very carefully vetted and discussed by the Building Committee and others. And again, I don't remember the specifics on this, but I think the cost of the sunshade, the sun screening was such that it was, it didn't necessarily justify the limited amount of energy savings you might achieve on it. A lot of it was aesthetics, my recollection of.
That's that's true, Tony. I don't know if Adam has anything to add, but I can also say that I think based on where we are.
I don't think you could add them now anyways.
Thank you, Tony. That's exactly what I said.
That's what I was gonna say at this point, if I, because there's, I believe, and I'm not the architect, but I believe they would be structurally integral to the to the fenestration system, and I don't think it could be added now.
Tony, my memory.
A co-chair of the Building Committee, which happens to be one of our select board members, Mary.
Yeah, thank you. Also, in terms of the sunshade, one of my understandings, of course, I could be wrong, is that the geothermal system that we are now installing also keeps the temperature pretty even, allowing for easy heating and cooling, therefore kind of subverting the need to have the sunshades. So it would be an extra expense without much increased efficiency because we have the geothermal. That was my understanding, but I'm, I could be. I'm just leave that there.
Thank you, Mary. Adam, did you have anything else to add to this topic?
No, I I just add that I, Tony's memory of it is correct. They were unfortunately a casualty of value engineering. The energy impact was deemed to be minimal. And yeah, there's, there's no putting them back on the building at this point.
John has his hand up.
Hey John.
Hey, everybody. Thank you, Heather. Couple of things. I I wasn't sure, I heard clearly what the occupancy date will be. Do you mind just sort of putting that on the record as to the date of occupancy of the building?
Yeah, go ahead, guys. Sorry.
So September fifteenth is substantial completion, as I understand it, which is a contractual date between the town and Gilbane. Occupancy would follow thereafter.
Okay. But did I hear January mentioned at one point?
That was, I think that was misspoken, John. Yeah, it's it's September fifteenth of of this year. And as Tony said, that's the substantial completion day with occupancy taking probably somewhere between then and Indigenous People Day.
Indigenous People's Day. Okay, okay, great. One other sort of follow-up question. As I recall it, one of the major reductions in cost as a result of value engineering was substantial reduction in the anticipated cost of the moving. Well, forgive me for for for, I'm I'm actually speaking about the Pierce project. I should be speaking about Driscoll. Do you have contingency that you think covers the cost of moving into the building? That's my question.
Yes, there's a budget line for it, and there is contingency if if necessary. Yep, in both cases.
Yeah, ninety-five thousand nine oh six is the budget.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because it, yeah, it's great that you've, you're doing, you know, you're doing terrific with your contingency budget, staying, you know, ahead of target. But there could be, you know, a major, major draw from contingency, I'm assuming, still to come. But you you sound pretty satisfied that you're, you're not just on target, that you'll be on target when you get to the end of the project.
I do feel that way, John. The the one thing that could still, we talked about this at the commission meeting monthly. You know, so I believe, you know, we have fifty percent more than than one would typically hold on a job at this point, which is great news. The one spot that we still could have a large, you know, use of contingency could be from unforeseen conditions and demoing the existing building. So that's still our, you know, the the one thing we really want to get through before, you know, we we truly know where we are, you know, based on the tests we've done, we believe we're okay, but we could still, you know, get caught with some unforeseen conditions in the in the demo of the building. So that's really, I believe, our one large risk remaining.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions before we jump into Trazo? Seeing none, let's jump in.
All right. So our, I guess our Trazo presentation is is brief. But we were asked to look at as a change order poured epoxy Trazo in lieu of vinyl composite tile. And a tat, this drawing that you see is the patterning of it in the area that it is. It's a, it's a little over six thousand square feet of area. It's in the main.
The main entrance on the ground floor, right, Adam?
The main entrance, the main lobby, it's where food service works. It's a very heavy traffic area. So on the slide, you see the costs as they break down. Gilbane, the hard cost, that's the construction cost, if you will. That includes the cost from DePauli, who is the installer. There's some other costs related to protection and phasing of the work that are kind of baked into that number. There is the JLA, those are our design costs. Those are the costs to produce the these drawings that were bid. And get the patterning and the color correct. And then the last is the left field soft cost, mostly due to schedule extension. For a total of five sixteen nine oh two. Advantages of Trazo, I know that the town has Trazo in some of its buildings, is its longevity. You know, it's not uncommon that Trazo can last as much as seventy-five years, you know. It's it's ideal for high-traffic areas. It's also, once sealed correctly, it is a easier flooring to maintain. And again, especially in a cafeteria type setting. It was deemed important, so.
Do you happen to have your like windows menu open? I'm getting reports of something blocking half of the presentation.
I don't see it on my screen.
Okay. Mike, you have your hand up?
Yes, thanks, Heather. So I have a couple of questions about the Trazo. And one point I want to make is that this is a poured epoxy Trazo floor. There've been a couple of comments about vinyl being plastic. I spent twenty-five years in the industrial plastics chemicals industry, and my recollection is that epoxy is a plastic. So it's mighty hard to get away from plastics, and I think we just ought to set that aside. On the I I have to say that what we're talking about is something that's going to cost eighty-four dollars a square foot on that order versus something that's going to cost, would cost about five dollars a square foot. And there have been arguments made that, well, this is cost-effective because it, you know, it will save money in the long run. My favorite economist made the comment that in the long run, we're all dead. And of course, that's going to happen sooner than than later for some of us. But I'm perfectly happy to look at long-term investments as long as they have a payback, but the payback sort of the return on investment here is under one percent per per year. So again, I would set that, just as I would set that plastic thing aside. I think we should set aside that the, oh, this is a cost-effective. It seems to me that what we're talking about is a combination functionality and aesthetics. And I'm not really sure about functionality. That floor is a, is a floor depending on you know, the noise level that you get off the floor and how, you know, slippery and how often it has to be washed and so forth. But the aesthetics is an interesting argument. And I'm willing to be persuaded. I did, however, see a schematic that showed a very interesting sort of a cubist geometric pattern on on the floor. And I wonder if you can describe, because you're talking about using the the flooring, color in the flooring in order to lead people through the building. I wonder if you can describe to us what the pattern is actually going to be? What is the aesthetic that we're talking about here?
Well, Mike, apologies. I am, I or Jim or Andy or I are not the architects. I as far as commenting on the design, I beyond showing it to you, there's, I can't really do that for you.
Would be perfectly fine.
Okay, great. Andy, can we take back to the previous slide? But Mike, while we do, it would be very hard to argue a payback analysis with this, right? There is definitely something.
Thank you.
That that would be a foolish argument, right? But it is definitely a a more premium surface. And it is the grand space, right? This is the grand staircases in this area. This is, this atrium has got a lot of natural light to it. Someday, it's it's got a lot of wow factor. And I do think it is. There is, you know, the the premiumness of the material means the most, in my humble opinion.
Right. As I say, I'm, it was the cost argument and the plastic argument that really set my teeth on edge because they're both wrong.
You're right on, Mike.
Argument, the aesthetic argument is an interesting one, but the pattern I'm looking at here, it it's not, it's nothing at all like the rather rather interesting pattern that I saw in the schematic, which was very dramatic and very dramatic, but very, very definitely not leading anybody anywhere.
Mike, I'll say that this rendering isn't doing it, it it's giving you an idea of what the patterning is, but the, but it's actually, I believe, it it's actually a red, the accent piece that's coming up kind of Auburn there.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's, it is a, it's a custom red. I think it is a a Driscoll red. It is, is its origin.
Right. And that's my next question. And I I think probably the last, and I appreciate the answers that you give, and particularly honesty around it, really kind of a cost-effective argument about this. The what I understand is that this is a special order, right? As you've said, and what's the cost and timing impact of that of the special order? If you had something that was a slightly different color, that wasn't the perfect match, what would, you know, what would the the difference be in those two, in both cost and and timing?
I'm not, the cost was, cost was Adam for that, for the
for the, for the custom color. I really, I'm really, I'm not sure, Mike. I'm sorry, I don't have that information. I could get it for you. I I I I don't have that, I'm sorry.
If I remember correctly, it was six thousand dollars.
A six thousand dollar difference between the two.
Between doing it all white and doing the red and white.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And and Adam, if I may, and we wanted the red and white because it was school colors. Wanted Trazo because it'll last about eighty years. We're a VCT tile floor with that kind of traffic, i.e. the kids walking in from recess, you know, from the the top there and from Washington Street, tracking in sand salt and everything else. They're gonna, they're gonna chew through that floor. The maintenance costs are more than double. And that's sort of the difference. And that's with a low estimate of four percent annually for an increase. Construction costs increase consistently seem to happen more than four percent year over year. So we took sort of a low-ball estimate, not not to.
Yeah, you're not really gonna try and make a, you're not really gonna try and make a cost-effective argument out of this, right?
Long term, it is cost-effective. It's just not as cost-effective as it would be as if we, if we had got it with the bid. The change order price is more than, more than what it would be.
Okay, so Mike, you've done a lot of asking.
Right, I'm awesome. Yeah, thank you.
Members that have questions too. So when we ask questions, try to make them not in the form of a speech. John.
John, I think you're muted.
Thank you very much. I thought Mike's questions are very good questions, and I I do want to say one thing about the 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 eighty dollars per square foot, excuse me, the eighty year, excuse me, eighty years as a timeframe that would justify the additional per-square-foot cost for Trazo. I'm sorry to have to point this out, but we've got at least one major school building that we're proposing to demolish after fifty years. So I I think we gotta be careful about using eighty-year time horizons for justifying the cost of products in school buildings at this. I'm gonna read back just a few of the comments that were made at the Building Commission meeting on this, and I want to first thank the Building Commission for having a very frank discussion about this Trazo cost. Here are the comments. Starting with, none of us are happy with the price, but it seems there's sufficient money for it. Next comment. I'm in favor of the product. I'm not in favor of the price. Next comment. No, I agree with you. The price is outrageous. It is absolutely ridiculous. Next comment. Any other project? We wouldn't have even gotten this far. Next comment. Had this discussion taken place at the appropriate time in the value engineering, it never would have been cut out in the first place. Next comment. It seems everyone recognizes that we're paying far more than we should. And everybody's okay with that. So I guess that's okay. Final comment. I don't think that's okay. I think it sounds like people are recommending that we do it anyway. So there's a lot of recognition that we are, for some reason, having having to do a process at a very high price point for this Trazo. And I'm just groping for what is the answer to why we are at such a high price point? Trazo does not have to cost eighty-four dollars a square foot. If you if you Google search, you know, the price range for Trazo, you you come to an answer, on average, twenty to thirty dollars per square foot, as low as fourteen dollars per square foot. So can we get a little bit more clarification as to why this Trazo costs eighty-four dollars per square foot? And and what about the price differential is is extraordinary enough to justify that kind of a price differential?
So before the team answers that, I I do want to give Miriam a chance to, I guess. So before the team answers that, I, I do want to give Miriam a chance to, I guess. Say whatever she wants to say about the quotes that you. Quoted from the building commission. And in my experience working in the public sector, it's. Very rare that you, that you pay what somebody would put in their own bathroom for tile. There is a lot of upcharge because there is, we just have a lot more contractual requirements to meet. Miriam?
Thank you. So I, I, I'm going to say two things. The first is. That despite all the quotes that John just read you, the building committee voted this. Upvoted this with a yes. So there, those quotes are selective. They were out of a larger, more robust, complex discussion in which the building committee came out in favor of. The second thing I will say, and this is to Mike. You know, this, this is to Mike, this is to everybody, but this was not a decision we made overnight. This was not a, oh, wow, Torazo, great, let's spend more money just for the hell of it. This was a decision, we, the committee, the building committee, we all really sat with this. Because of the cost, but because there were lots of reasons to think about this decision. Not just cost, not just aesthetics, not just efficiency, not just. The fact that, in, in fact, there's a lot more plastic in VCT there than there is in Torazo. It was all of these things together. And we were very thoughtful about it because. Because it was going to push out the move date and we're not putting Torazo in everywhere. We are putting it in really high volume use places. So I just really wanted to say that we didn't make this decision, take this decision lightly. The building commission voted four to zero in favor of this decision. So in despite of all the objections and all the comments you just heard from John, four to zero in favor. So I, I really hope that there is some trust in us as a, as a. As a purveyor of. Responsibility. I realize there might be some prior poor experiences, but we really took our time to make this decision. And yes, it's not ideal in terms of cost, but we weighed everything. It wasn't a single decision based on one single item. So thank you very much.
So John, I was going to call on the team to answer your question. I see your hand is up. Is this a new question or?
Just a clarification and very brief one. Cause the building commission is not the same as the Driscoll Building Committee. And I, I, I believe Miriam was going back and forth in terms of. The committee having decided to go for Torazo as a. Choice in, in, in the construction, a late choice in the construction versus the building commission. Which is an entirely separate body and she is correct that they did vote. And in fact, I think I acknowledge that. You know, by quoting the last quote, which is, you know, essentially saying, it sounds like everybody's for this. You know, and they're just going to go with it. And somebody said, we're going to go with it, but we don't like it. So.
So both the commission and the committee voted unanimously in favor of this change.
Right, yes, yeah. But they're two different bodies, that's all.
Okay, let's have, let's hear from the team.
Adam, do you want to talk about procurement?
Yeah, if I, if I could, right? So the costs are higher than we would have liked them to be. We, you know, we had a very candid conversation about that. But it is worth saying that we did bid this, right? There's limited people who do Torazo flooring and we did, we did bid this. We only received two bids, of which the lowest bid was three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to poly. Which is the major portion of this, right? So the market kind of spoke as to what the costs were these, you know, we bought it at. Not the greatest time in, in terms of escalation and. Different materials have different demand these days, right? And then the rest of it is, is the soft, soft costs, right? And, and then there, again, there are some costs baked in there that are due to the logistics. Of doing it in the sequencing, resequencing of some other trades. Just based on the timing of when we bought it. That's, that's about the best I can do in terms of the price.
Matt, did you want to add anything?
Can I add one thing? If Matt's not, I.
That's muted.
Matt was muted, yeah.
Sorry. The school committee voted unanimously to submit the request. And the building commission voted unanimously to proceed after time and, and, and some deliberations. So it is really just with this board and this does affect the. The overall schedule of the project. We, you know, if we're not, if for some reason this doesn't happen. Then the schedule, I believe, moves, moves back to August. And I'm not sure how smooth that would, that would go at, at this point in time.
Tony?
Yes, this, you know, just a couple of thoughts on this. You know, the, the price quotes that were referenced, they're, again, they're not necessarily what one would pay. And you know, when you have a general contractor involved in, under. Frankly, under a change order circumstance, but as, as, as it was said earlier, this was bid. The team did, in my view, a very good efforts to contain costs to the greatest extent possible. And this is going to give you. Again, it's going to improve the look of the building. It's a heavily traveled area. And you know, the other thing that was alluded to was the trust issue and I think that's actually quite important. And the reason I say that is because, you know, the building commission was established a long time ago. To act on matters of construction on behalf of the town. And furthermore, about twenty-seven years ago, I recall the town went to building committees once again to help. You know, delve into these issues very carefully. And you know, I think it would, it, it has the potential there to. Erode some trust on the part of, of the people involved in this. If we cannot rely on the, the good and sound work of the different bodies that went into this effort.
John?
Oh. I think I must have just left my hand up. Forgive me.
So we do need to vote on the Torazo issue. Any discussion from select board members? Thank you very much to the team for the update on the Driscoll School. We've had so much on our plate recently that it's been difficult to. Remember everything that's going on in town. Mike?
Yeah, I'll just say, as I'm. Willing to go with the aesthetic argument, again, anybody who, like, wants to argue costs with me is going to be in trouble. Or payback with me. And I appreciate the point about trust and our relying on the public bodies that we have. Delegated or town meetings delegated responsibility to.
Yeah, I believe it's called Monday morning quarterbacking. And it gets old real fast. Any other discussion? So there are three proposed votes. I will read them off and then call the roll. I move approval of contract amendment number ten and the amount of twenty-six thousand. One hundred and seventy-one dollars with Left Field LLC for added construction administration services for change to Torazo flooring. And certain sections of the school from VCT. All those in favor? Bernard? John?
Can't say I love it, but for the same reasons that the building commission finally had its back to the world and said, I, I'll say aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I move approval of contract amendment number twenty-two and the amount of twelve thousand five hundred with Jonathan Levy. Architects for services related to flooring at the Driscoll School Project. All those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And finally, I move approval of change order number nineteen and the amount of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And two hundred and thirty-one dollars with Gilbane Building Company related to Torazo flooring in certain sections of the school from VCT. All those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much for giving us this presentation.
Thank, thanks for tonight, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So moving into our second school-related presentation. What to do with former Newbury College? Short-term use. Chaz, do you want to kind of recap what we've said, what we've done, what we need to decide to do tonight?
Sure. So I think, you know, the leading contender on this has continued to be the, the schools have, have asked for the use of. The space, for some of the space during the pendency of the. The potential construction, reconstruction of the Pierce School. And since then, there have been a variety of discussions both here and across town about. Is that the highest and best use of the space temporarily? Can't the schools go somewhere else? All, all of which are legitimate questions that I think have been, you know, really kind of delved into in, in some detail, both by the school team and our team. You know, the, on the town side, our position on this has always been. If the schools already use the space, which is the upper two floors. We just ask that it be conditioned stringently on the building, the work of the, of this town departments that are currently there and not being disturbed. With the school, because my understanding, the schools have agreed to that, agreed to that throughout. You know, we just need to, as, as always, when people are sharing space, if this goes through, there's always that concern of, you know. Turf and who's paying utilities and all that. And we just need to be very cognizant and on top of that. Before those issues become unmanageable, we need to be proactive on the town side and on the school side. In identifying issues and raising them to resolve between the superintendent and me. Before they get out of hand, they get to you or the school committee. So that was on the town's end, right? We, we would just ask that the space be conditioned on the continued use of it for town purposes that's not being used for the schools. And I see, you know, both David and Linus are here. And I know that they have provided in your packets. An additional presentation that I believe was made to the school committee. And I wonder regarding potential alternatives, because I know. We've received message, I've received messages and I know you have received messages, you know, suggesting alternatives and figuring out. Oh, Devin says, I, I don't think they wound up in the packet, but maybe if the, if that group wants to. Someone, someone wants to just briefly summarize the, the results of that. You know, the, the school analysis and what it, what it said. For the select board's benefit, I think that would help kind of put a final piece of the puzzle together for the select board team and let them make a decision, one way or the other.
They were mailed to us, by the way.
It was mailed to you?
Yes.
Okay.
At least I got it.
Good.
I got it.
Good. Maybe, so maybe. David or Linus, if either, either you want to just briefly summarize for the broader community what the kind of findings there were.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for the invite again. I have with us the principal of the Pierce School, Jamie Yadoff is here with us. And I believe Devin, Matt is still in, maybe, oh, there he is, Matt's there. Can give, so I'm going to ask Jamie to give more of a quick synopsis on the educational. Platform that was shared at school committee and then ask Matt to do a quick review of the. Various leasing options and costs and those types of things. And then David can provide commentary on behalf of the committee.
Thank you, Dr. Hillary. Can everybody hear me okay? Perfect. So I'm just going to go all the way back to the beginning, but move fairly quickly on the assumption that most of this is repetitive for most of you. But it will refresh everybody's memory. So we first started talking about swing space being OLS. And Clark Road. In fact, the space was originally up for rent as Pierce overflow space. And then the intent was that it would continue to serve as swing space. Beep and people from what was the Spurber Education Center. School side administrators ended up moving into that space and we took over the SEC. And in lieu of moving over there and dividing the community for more than a decade. So that was the original plan and was in the original budget. And then we needed to get that budget number down below a target number. And the, the place that we could take the biggest chunk out without impacting permanently the programming. For the school was the relocation budget. And so the relocation budget was cut to the extent that it no longer allowed us to consider leased spaces. Which meant we needed to look exclusively at spaces that were owned by the town of Brookline. OLS can hold approximately two-thirds of our school community. That leaves us finding a home for three grades of students. We did initially look at Driscoll as an option last summer. We included both the Driscoll and Pierce communities in a community presentation about that and solicited feedback. Dave Euclid, the Driscoll principal, and I spent a lot of time talking about that. The initial proposal looked at potentially moving sixth, seventh and eighth graders there. As school leaders, we had significant concerns about whether that schedule, a six-section super middle school schedule could be built on that facility. And we concluded that the only feasible way to do it would be to move our K to two students there. Community feedback was not warm and fuzzy about that. The specific concerns were as followed. I'll run through them all. There would be an impact on deep classrooms because we would need those early childhood classrooms for our K students. And since we're not renewing the lease at Clark Road, that would have a disproportionate impact on beep, who would be losing those three spaces in addition to the current leased spaces. There are concerns that are significant about outdoor space access for the first two years. The first year that the building is open and into the second year as demolition continues and the grass or sod is placed. There were concerns about both Driscoll and Pierce communities having less access to extended day programming. Given the increased numbers of students on that site. It would also mean the potential loss of extended day for our students in grades three through five. Because our current extended day doesn't have the staff capacity to support two sites. There were significant concerns that rebounding Driscoll enrollment could quickly lead to overcrowding in the K two grades. There were community concerns that the Pierce community would be lost during those K to two years. And that the transition for our peer students to that swing space for grade three would be especially challenging as they were separated from those friendships. There were also significant community concerns about our K two students being separated from their grade three to eight siblings who walk them. Pierce is largely a walking district. Many of our families don't have cars. And then Driscoll community members expressed significant concern about the impact on their school culture. And having that many non-Driscoll students there as they're attempting to come back together in this new building and really build their school culture. So given that, we turned our attention to other town-owned buildings and that's where the Newbury option came up. That space is very well suited for our middle school students. Its physical design is such that it has lockers, it has nice wide windows, it's got appropriate sized bathrooms. We know that OLS can accommodate K to five because it has before, so we have experience with that. Also, our sixth through eighth graders are much more capable of handling busing or a longer commute than our K to two students would be. And so that made a lot more sense. It also preserves our extended day K to five programming. Which was something that people were concerned about with the Driscoll option on the table. So, you know, we've walked the space several times. As Chaz has said, we have agreed to partner as much as necessary with the town to ensure that their work can continue uninterrupted in those spaces. We're very used to sharing space at Pierce School. That's definitely something we've had a lot of experience with. And so we're ready, willing and able to share that space. And I'm happy to take any specific questions when everybody else is done.
Thank you, Jamie. Matt? Thank you, Jamie. Uh, Matt, if you want to talk about the various leasing options?
Right, so we, we really looked at three options. The first was, uh, remaining in Clark Road. Uh, we couldn't reach, uh, a tentative agreement with the landlord, uh, to a price that we thought would work. Um, and so even if we extended, uh, the last known price that we had, that would cost us around six million dollars. And folks didn't find that really acceptable. We did get word about, uh, Saint Mary's, um, school right across the street, the old high school. I believe the last high school class graduated there in the early eighties. Um, it's been used as a couple other things, uh, most recently by, uh, facing history. Is, I believe, Jamie and I found three classrooms in there and a bunch of offices. Uh, the square footage, the layout and the egresses, it's not a, it's not a conducive amount of square feet. And going through the, the high school project, which, uh, you know, uh, third-floor renovations in the quad, which we thought were gonna take about four and a half months, is on pace to take about nine. Uh, they're just aren't, uh, always the contractors out there to do the work in the time that you need it done, and um, and trying to turn somebody else's building into something that works for us in short order, uh, didn't seem like the best approach. And then we're back to looking at, at Newberry, uh, a property the town owns. It was once used as a school and as office space, and, um, you know, thankfully, it was Pierce of all communities, where they're used to an open-floor classroom design. And we could use some, some of the open-floor spaces to run, uh, a couple of classrooms at the same time as the community's pretty used to it, so. You know, that, that's pretty much where we're at, and that, that would be the, the shortest amount. We do have a relocation budget, as we do for pretty much all the school construction projects. And we think we can make it work, um, in accord with, you know, the overall, overall project. Um, you know, budgets or plans, people make adjustments, uh, and committees make adjustments, and then we still work within the overall, uh, budget of the, the project, so should the project go forward? And I'll, I'll leave it at that.
John? You're unmuted.
Yeah, is this, is this an appropriate time for questions?
Sure.
Great. Um, couple of questions. I'll start with this one. Uh, there was discussion at the latest school committee meeting on this. Um, near the end, uh, uh, Jamie Adoff brought up, uh, the question of whether the building department, which is occupying the first two floors, I guess it's building and engineering, um, would actually be okay with giving up, say, half of one of the two floors, which would then open up the possibility of there being some, some not, not gym space, but, you know, just kind of physical education space, uh, you know, weight training space, whatever. And also maybe some, some room for, um, some kind of a mini cafeteria-type space. I- i- is that still the, the plan here? Because I'm hearing conflicting reports as to whether there's willingness or whether it's thought to be a good idea that, um, the schools should occupy more than just two floors.
David?
Yes, so to clarify, uh, that issue, John. Uh, I also said very clearly at that meeting that we do not want to be looking to displace any other functions that are currently taking place at Newberry. However, there was indeed a discussion about how we could optimize the experience for our students at Newberry. So to the extent feasible, if there is additional space available in the lower levels, then we would like to be able to utilize them. The school committee, uh, voted unanimously uh, to recommend to the select board that you authorize us to use Newbury, the Newbury College Academic Building, a swing space for the Pierce Construction Project. And again, we're feasible to, uh, explore additional space within the building that could optimize the overall school experience, so that we could have dedicated space for art, lunch, and physical education. But we would want that to be a collaborative effort, not to displace anyone. So we are hopeful that both are possible.
Okay, um, second question, uh, has the, given the vintage of this building, has it been checked for, say, asbestos or any materials that might, um, require mitigation?
I'd have to defer to the building department on that. But it was oc- it was occupied, uh, you know, prior to us purchasing it.
And it will be checked for those things before we put children in there. Bernard?
Yeah, uh, a couple questions. Number one, um, I assume we're gonna have an MOU or some other documents to sort of memorialize the terms of, uh, the school's use of the building.
We could certainly do that.
Yeah, we can draw that up. That's fine.
Yeah. One thing I'd like to include is a hard move-out date, um, based on when, uh, Pierce School was open. Uh, I, I don't want, I mean, if the schools are gonna use it beyond that period of time, I think they need to be in line with all the other, uh, people in town, uh, seeking to use, uh, Pierce School, the, um, Newberry for everything from, uh, swimming pools to, uh, housing and, and, and other things. So that, I think that, that should be a, a key, uh, piece of the, um, of the, uh, MOU. And I, I suggest we have an MOU. The, the other thing is, um, you know, comparing the cost of, uh, Newberry with Mammonades and Saint Mary's was a little unfair, because we didn't include in the cost of Newberry, uh, the rental that, uh, rental costs that would otherwise be included in a building like this. And those costs, and I know that, you know, we, we, we wanna make it easy for the schools, and you know, you're gonna be paying for utilities and things like that, but you also have the issue of the bonded debt that, that was used to purchase this. Um, so I guess I just wanna make the point that, you know, comparisons that we've been given, you know, aren't really very fair in terms of the true cost of the various options.
So, I, I have a different opinion, but I'm gonna, um, call on Mike Stammen first.
Um, thanks, Heather. Uh, uh, that's an interesting comment from, uh, from Bernard about the, um, sort of the sunk cost, uh, question that we, that, I think that's a very, that, that's thin iceberg, um. And so I think one of the things that I, I wanna make sure is, is heard here is that this is a town building. It was purchased for use by the town. And there is, uh, I think, uh, a, a fair amount of concern that it remain a, very clearly a town building, that it will revert after this one situation to being, uh, available fully for the town to do whatever, uh, the advisory committee, um, decides should be done with it, whether it's uh, swimming pool, a hockey rink, uh, twelve stories of, uh, affordable housing, uh, whatever. Um, and I say that because, um, I, I know that the school has been very protective of its own quote, own buildings, even though those buildings are paid for by town taxpayers. And, uh, I, I just wanted to make it clear that an MOU is not just a good idea. Uh, it's an imperative.
So Mike actually kind of touched on, I, I guess, what I was going to object to, um, you know, it, it, who do you assign the fixed cost to? Do you assign it to this temporary use? Do you assign it to the overall longer-term use? You know, when we get there, there was an outpouring of support that we should buy this property, and everyone knew that we didn't exactly know what we were going to do with it. Now, I think that that meant that everybody thought that what we were going to do with it was what the thing that they cared about was going to be. And, you know, so, um, the costs are sunk. Now we gotta figure out what to do with it. And it, it's been a complicated process to get there. And there seems to be a short-term use need and a longer-term use need. And in my short term on the select board, nothing ever takes as short a time as you expect. So, we need some time to figure out what the longer-term use is, and I trust that we would be spending money to put kids in space that we do not own and maintain. And so I do believe that this is a cost-saving measure. Um, John?
By the way, I wasn't doubting that.
Okay.
Okay, um, tha- thanks again. Uh, I, I just wanna get clarification on the Saint Mary's question, because frankly, I, I thought Saint Mary's had been ruled out, because I, you know, every time it comes up, I hear that there is a plan for a veterinary, um, clinic to move into that building, and in fact, there is such an application, um, that's kind of moving, making its way through, um, the processes at Town Hall. So i- i- is this even worth comparing? It, what, what, what made us think that we might actually still have a shot at leasing for, you know, a considerable period of time, three years minimum, um, that space? I saw Matt raise his hand.
Matt raised his hand to answer.
Yeah, so Colliers, uh, you know, the same, the same, uh, broker, uh, that we bought Newberry from is also the the, the broker for the Archdiocese of Boston. I'm not sure exactly how they reached out. Um, but they told us they were in the process of that, but it wasn't finalized. The zoning board of appeals needs to change uh, uh, the zoning, so it could be used for medical purposes. And they were considering us as a Plan B, as we were considering to see if this would be a viable Plan B or C for us. So that, that's why we went and took a look at it.
David?
Just to add on to what Matt was saying, uh, anytime that we are undertaking a major project, we want to exercise our due diligence to make sure that all potentially viable possibilities have been explored and exhausted. And so that's why even though we weren't really sure that Saint Mary's would be available, we thought that given its close proximity to Pierce, we might as well check it out, because sometimes other plans fall through and see if it could be a potential match. And it really wasn't. When we went and explored it, it only has three classrooms. It had been converted into office space. It would cost an inordinate amount of uh, time and money to get it ready to serve as potential swing space. Uh, and that's not even getting into what the cost of a lease would be. So it just did not work out, and that's what brought us back to Newberry, which had been among the leading options all along, but we did want to look at what else we could possibly uh, do, and this was the best fit.
Miriam?
Thank you. So, um, first, thank you, uh, to, to you, David and Linus and Matt, and everyone for your due diligence on this. I found the presentation's quite helpful. Um, I, I, to me, I, I'm with Heather in this. I think that this is, and with Mike. I think this is a great short-term use for this. I think an MOU is a good idea. Um, and, um, I, I, I think the biggest concern that I heard from Pierce parents was the transportation issue, and, you know, having the busing there is is paramount, and it's in there. I see it's in the budget. I see it's in the planning. I see even things like having a stop at Old Lincoln, so that older students can walk home younger siblings. So I appreciate the thoughtfulness of it, and this has my support.
So, we've talked about this for a couple of weeks. Um, I believe that it is time to actually vote it now. I will echo that this is for a short-term use. Bernard, uh, I'm glad that you raised the issue of an MOU. I think that's a very good idea. And instead of, um, an absolute date, I think it should be tied to um,
Opening of the school.
Right. So, you know, we, we just leave the date tied to the opening of the Pierce renovated school.
And my apologies, Bernard, you suggested the MOU. Thank you.
No problem.
So, I'm just, oh, so there's just one vote. Um, shall I read the vote, and then I'll stop to see if anybody has any comments before I call the vote? Okay.
So, I'm sorry, I had a question. I didn't get my hand up.
Oh, okay, John?
Yeah. I mean, gi- gi- given, um, that we have now raised this question of an MOU, and it's not inconsequential. I mean, be within the MOU that we determine, um, exactly how much of the Newberry space is the, uh, Driscoll school going to use, um, and how much will be left to the town's use? Um, shouldn't we wait until we have the MOU to take a vote on approving the, the, um, are we just approving this in principle? What are we doing here?
I would say we're approving it in principle. I trust our town administrator to work with the superintendent to get something that reflects the many weeks of discussion that we had about this.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, um, we'll, we'll definitely reach, and, you know, all, all of this, I think, is contingent on us reaching, reaching that agreement in the MOU that, that tracks with the language of the vote here that we've kind of put together, that staff have put together, which I think covers all the bases on this. I do also just wanna make sure that everyone is aware, right, that the knock-on impacts of this, right, include, you know, uh, funding in this, funding in the SIP for some of this, um, uh, some of the relocation of the admin staff, right? There's a, a request there on the, um, um, uh, for the, um, office relocation, the SIP of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So I do just wanna make sure that everyone knows that, uh, in the capital budget, um, there is a request out there. Uh, it's a six-figure request, and it's not a, not a not a million-dollar request, but that is a part of this. So just so everyone is aware, and there's no surprises on that front.
Mike, does that change your mind?
No, I, I, I'm just wondering whether, um, there's a mechanism for including that in the school budget.
Sounds like a job for the town-school partnership.
We will, we will get to the bottom of it, one way or the other. I think the, the aim here is if you say, if you say a yes vote on this opens the process up to get an MOU together, that, that hashes all those details out.
Yeah, I think the reason why we should get the ball rolling on this sooner rather than later is because, you know, the Pierce School project is ongoing, and they need to know sooner rather than later where they're going to put these kids. So I will read the language, and then I will stop, pause, see if there are any hands raised before I call. I move that the public schools of Brookline be authorized to use portions of the former Newberry College site on a temporary basis during the short-term relocation of certain grades of the Pierce School, while that school's main building is being demolished and rebuilt under the condition that the town's existing uses of the Newberry College site, including but not limited to uses by town departments and those covered by the existing parking agreement for the site, are not disrupted. And all of this will be codified in an MOU, put together by town staff. All those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you very much. Moving into, I think, our, no, our second-to-last bit of business this evening. Good evening, Ms. Murphy.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, would you like me to begin, Chair Hamilton?
Yes, if you just kind of, because this is the first time this has ever happened in the si- almost six years that I've worked. So if you just kind of wanna do a lay of the land as to what we're discussing here tonight and why.
Certainly, I'd be happy to. I do have a memory, though, of an architect who was on one of the committees, maybe the planning committee, um, or, or ZBA or something. Anyway, I think there may have been one Chair Hamilton, but maybe it was more than six years ago. I've lost track of time. So, good evening, Jocelyn. I'm Jocelyn Murphy, speaking to you in my capacity tonight as a trustee of the Walnut Hill Cemetery, and therefore, a special municipal employee. Um, as this board is aware, the state conflict of interest law governs the ethical conduct of the municipal employees. And Section nineteen in particular prohibits municipal employees from participating in matters in which they have a financial interest. However, there is a provision in Section nineteen that permits municipal employees to participate- However, there is a provision in Section nineteen that permits municipal employees to participate in such matters if their appointing authority determines that the financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality can expect from the employee. At a meeting next week, the cemetery trustees have been asked to consider two locations of the cemetery for purposes of burial expansion. One of these areas is located behind the Potterham Library near Bellingham Road, and the other is adjacent to Allendale Road. Both of these locations are located distantly from my property. However, because I'm a cemetery abutter, I am presumed by the Ethics Commission to have a conflict of interest. So to be clear, I am not seeking a waiver of the presumed conflict, but instead a determination from this board that the presumed conflict is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of my services as a cemetery trustee. I believe I'm the longest-serving cemetery trustee, and I've developed a very deep respect for the cemetery status as a National Historic Registered Property. And as stewards of the property, I believe that the trustees should consider expansion proposals like this holistically. In this particular case, in this particular case, by reviewing the existing cemetery master plan to determine whether this proposal aligns with it by considering the town's recently published Urban Forest Master Plan to determine whether it will result in the unnecessary loss of tree canopy. And by consulting the Department of the Interior Standards for the Protection of National Historic Registered Properties before proceeding. On this basis, and in view of the fact that the proposal for expansion is not near my property and therefore is not expected to affect it, I request this board's determination that my presumed conflict as an abutter is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of my services as a trustee, so that I may participate as a trustee in the meeting next week and in future meetings. Um, I would add, if it's helpful to you in considering this determination, there, there was a Section nineteen disclosure and request for approval a number of years ago from a board member, uh, which ultimately was approved by the select board, but more recently in Wellesley. In two thousand and twenty, Wellesley's Town Council sought and received a favorable Section nineteen determination from the Wellesley Select Board, um, which authorized, uh, Town Council to participate in matters concerning the development of a real estate project that directly abutted the townhomes where the, the Town Council resided and was a trustee. Uh, of course, the circumstances in this case are quite different where the potential expansion proposal is distant from my property. In any event, I will be happy to answer any questions you may have concerning this request.
Great. Um, oh, Bernard?
Uh, I think Marion was first.
Okay, Miriam?
Thanks, Bernard. Uh, thank you, uh, Jocelyn, for the presentation. I, I have a, I'm just a little, I just need a little background. If you have always lived in your current residence and have been a long-term trustee, why is this an issue now?
It's an issue now because the project, uh, first of all, I should go back in time a little bit. Some of you may recall when a cell tower was proposed at the, at, in, uh, within Wallenhill Cemetery. However, that, the proposal was to install the, the cell tower at the farthest reach of the cemetery, um, from my property. So I called the Ethics Commission um, council and asked, um, whether I was able to participate in that. And they said, because it was so far away, really, there was no expectation it would affect my property. And so I was, I didn't, I don't believe I requested Section nineteen approval from the board at the time because of that opinion. In this case, um, staff, Alexander Vecchio, who's staff to the cemetery trustees, along with the landscape architect that was hired, um, proposed a number, a number of locations, one of which, um, when I looked closely at it, was not far from my property. In fact, it was nearly behind. This was at the last meeting in December. However, the trustees ultimately decided not to pursue that particular lotion, uh, location, but in the exercise of caution, I decided it would be a good idea to seek your approval under Section nineteen, so there would be no question about my ability to participate as a trustee.
Can I clarify? So, so you didn't move and what changed is you saw that this was going to have a, you, you were concerned because this was going to have a direct impact. And then I'm just trying to figure this out.
So, so there is a presumption, the, the Ethics Commission has determined that abutters to development projects, there have a presumption of a conflict, um, regardless, I suppose, of where they're located as an abutter. So, yes, my property, um, I, I have property that abuts, um, uh, on Baker Circle, which is, um, as I said, distant from the two current proposals, but nevertheless, I am in a butter, and so I do have a presumed conflict.
Thank you.
Bernard?
Okay, so the, uh, the, the expansion is into land already owned by the cemetery, but the concern is that um, you may be affected because you're afraid of being next to a cemetery. I mean, is that, is that, is that really the issue? I, I guess, I mean, it's hard, and maybe, maybe this is not something that's worth, uh, going into, but it seems to me kind of ridiculous that, uh, you know, you don't have shadow problems as you would have if there was a large apartment building. Uh, you don't have, um, you know, a lot of construction work. So I guess the, the, uh, real conflict that is presumed is that you may be closer to a cemetery in ghost.
You know, yes, I've been in a butter of the cemetery since I moved to Baker Circle in the nine, in the nine, late nineties. By the way, it's a beautiful cemetery. I encourage all of you to visit it. If you haven't, I consider it one of the jewels of Brookline. Um, and so I consider myself fortunate to be in a butter. Um, but I, but I, I suppose the notion is if any development is to take place, there's a presumed conflict, um, which is, uh, which is what raises the necessity of my request.
John?
Thank you. Thank you, Jocelyn. Um, I, I have to say, I'm, I'm really puzzled that, uh, that this is considered to be by the Ethics Commission to be a presumed conflict in that, um, you know, with our form of government, um, it's often considered to be a plus to have someone who's got, you know, who's from the neighborhood or, you know, um, think about the situation we went through, you know, with, um, just, just in recent weeks with, uh, the Hancock Village property and all of the people who are very, very, very concerned about, um, the impacts that are being caused by construction there. And think about the town meeting members who a- also are, are some of them, you know, very near neighbors to all of this. And they get involved and they try to lobby and they try to represent the interests of their constituents. It's a, you know, it's a good thing to have people who are immediately impacted, um, occasionally be involved in the decision-making, um, on, on issues such as this one. So that's my position. I'll take, you know, as given that the, the Ethics Commission has ruled, would there be the option of us simply, uh, um, leaving this alone and you, uh, recuse yourself from a vote that is considered to be one that might impact your property or impact your property because it doesn't impact your property, if you know what I mean?
Um, so the option, and in fact, what I did at the last meeting, there wasn't enough time, um, I was somewhat surprised, as I believe the other trustees were surprised by the locations that were chosen for this expansion. Um, and so I didn't have enough time to seek a determination from this board. And so I reached out to the Ethics Commission Council and, you know, I knew this answer, but I confirmed that I was able to participate as a private citizen, which is what I did at the last meeting. Um, but I do think that I add tremendous value to the, to the Board of Trustees. Frankly, by virtue of the fact that I'm in a butter and I have a very good knowledge of the property, probably better than anyone else, because I've served the longest and I'm in a butter, um, which is, was the point of me saying that I believe we should be looking at this proposal holistically. And so I think I'm a valuable participant, and that's frankly why I'm asking for your determination that I can participate as a trustee, notwithstanding the presumed conflict.
Uh, Chance?
Thanks. Um, just, just a quick question of practicality here. Um, if the board grants this, so this, this is a waiver to participate in a specific matter. I guess that, my question is, how do we, how does the board deal on an ongoing basis with this continued presumed conflict? Right? The conflict doesn't go away, um, on a, on an issue-by-issue basis. Is there, is there a mechanism that you're proposing that allows this to happen in some way where the board doesn't have to take a vote every time you're asked to consider an issue as a trustee? Is there, is there some, is there some way to work what you're, what you're asking for that doesn't involve this recurring?
Uh, yes, in fact, I believe I've done that. I believe I worded the request in a manner that would permit me to participate in future matters. I mean, if, if a decision was made to, um, you know, develop the cemetery up to the property line of my house, you know, I think that would, that might be a circumstance where I would, you know, have a perhaps a real conflict, right? Because there would no longer be a vegetative buffer between my property and the, and the cemetery, which, by the way, is considered to be a value to folks within the cemetery as well as outside of the cemetery. So I think the language that I've drafted in my request is broad enough to cover future similar proposals that don't directly affect my property.
Mike?
Uh, I, uh, I have no problem whatsoever granting a waiver and I appreciate, um, the, um, the care that, uh, Jocelyn brings in asking, but I just want to say that I agree with it. It's a beautiful property. It's a jewel and I actually don't intend to visit it. I intend to be there permanently. To some future day. I would, I would urge you actually to all take a look at, uh, and if you don't have other arrangements already.
May I add that at the height of COVID, um, people in Brookline and probably neighbors too, found, discovered it. And we had a tremendous number of, um, rep, you know, walkers and, you know, folks riding bikes and so forth. It was really fun to see, you know, they, so I hope you will visit it. It really is a beautiful place to walk, so.
But very different than Mount Auburn, which is what we tend to think of as being, you know, sort of the cemetery extraordinary. It's not, not that, that way at all. It's really beautiful.
Quite, because Mount Auburn is a private cemetery, but frankly, it was modeled after that type of cemetery. So we're very proud of that. And there's some very interesting people buried there. H.H. Richardson is buried in the Wallenhill Cemetery.
Miriam?
Thank you. Um, so having listened to everybody, I, I would support a workaround of some sort. It, it's unclear to me what, like, can we define what it is that you recuse yourself from votes specifically on this particular issue or if we can really define it, I would, I don't see why you have to come off the committee totally, but rather just on issues that would really directly impact or could potentially directly impact you.
Yeah, so, um, that, you know, that would be my plan. I, I, as I think I just said, at least that was my intent. Um, and so as you can imagine, there are, there, there might be a proposal, for example, to uh, repair the stone wall on Allendale Road, um, which again is the farthest reach from my property. I would hope that I can participate in that. Um, so my suggestion is that if there is a proposal that directly affects my property, I would come back to you and seek, um, particular, uh, authority to participate as a trustee, or I would simply recuse myself, depending on the circumstances, as I did in December.
Bernard?
Yeah, I don't know if Marion was suggesting this, but it's sort of goes without saying that if there's a development right next to your property, you would come back to the board and, and seek a, a waiver. Uh, so I don't think we need to make any changes to the form that you put together. That's what, you know, it's been suggested, so. I mean, this, this is straightforward, as far as I'm concerned. And I appreciate your, your actually bringing it to us so we can discuss it and understand this sort of obscure level or obscure aspect of the ethics, uh, law.
Mary?
Yeah, to be clear, I wasn't looking for a change in the form, but the form is not that granular. Um, so I just wanted to, I wanted to be real clear because I really came in to this discussion a blank slate. So I just wanted to, besides obviously having read the packet earlier today, so I just wanted to, to be really clear on what my understanding was.
So, you know, the, the determination, so, so the agenda, um, suggested that you would be waiving the conflict, which is not the case. It's, I'm really asking, uh, uh, from this board for a determination that the presumed conflict, that is the fact that I'm in a butter, um, does not, would, it, you don't expect it will affect, you know, my ability to serve as a trustee, uh, you know.
Yeah, that's more clear to me now, right? Based on what I had in the packet, that was not.
Yeah, yeah. And I apologize for sort of screwing it.
So from, you know, we, we rely very heavily on volunteers to help us make decisions, uh, for this town. And if you want to get into everybody's personal business, I'm sure you could find lots of potential or the appearance of conflicts. Um, I am fairly comfortable with this, um, but you know, we, we all should be, um, cognizant of the fact that the Ethics Commission, uh, I guess defaults to a position of assuming that there is a conflict. So um, people may make accusations and we will just have to, you know, dust your shoulders off. So any other discussion? So do I read the language?
So the language, um, yeah, so the language is fairly prescriptive. Um, so what I require is, is, um, a written determination, which I think can be a vote uh, made by the board that my presumed conflict of interest in these matters is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of my services as a trustee.
Okay. Could you copy and paste that into the chat, um, just so that I have access to the language?
Sure, yep.
That is not what's in my script.
I might do this. I'm gonna have to fiddle with it a little bit.
Or you could screen share and then I just read it.
Shall I, shall I put it into a vote?
Please. One last thing I have to try to do tonight.
Sorry, I have to settle with this language a little bit. Okay, I'm almost there. I think this does it.
Oh, great. Okay, um, so I will move that cemetery trustee Jocelyn Murphy's presumptive conflict of interest in the expansion of the cemetery is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from her in the role as a cemetery trustee. may expect from her in the role as a cemetery trustee.
May I, this is the problem of too many lawyers in the room. Sorry, Jocelyn. May I, may I add one subclause to this, which is, uh, I'll, I'll put it in the chat. Presumed kind of, the cemetery, uh, it, it's got, uh, in the absence of an actual conflict of interest, which I obviously, it was, it was basically what you said, Jocelyn, correct? Which is, you know, the presumed conflict of interest, okay, where, where the, the select board understands that there's that presumed conflict, and they're, they're, they're saying it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't impact your integrity of the services. But if there were to be an actual conflict of interest, which you would, you've said you'd recuse yourself anyway, that would just be, that, that would just be clear in the language. Is that right?
Well, I, not exactly. There are too many lawyers in the room, Mr. Carey. Because regardless of where the development is, it, it's only a presumption. There's no actual conflict of interest, right? It's a presumption, and that presumption is never going to go away, whether the development is close to my property or distant from my property. So, um, you know, what I, what I have, what I have represented to you is that if there was a development that was close to my property, that, you know, it, it appeared clear would, would have an effect on my property. I will come back to you. So, I don't, I don't think, see, I don't think you can distinguish between a presumed and actual conflict. It's simply a presumption of a conflict.
Right, I mean, it just seems that as long as, that language should be in there, right? Um, but, all right, I, it's.
We're just gonna have to trust.
Okay, I'm happy, whatever the board wants to do, it's fine.
This is, uh, this is why the Tomah is thirty volumes long or something.
Yes. No worries.
Okay, um, so not included in the language, but at least my understanding, I think the board's understanding is that, you know, i- if it starts to make us nervous, you will try to seek the board's direction.
Absolutely.
Very clearly abutting your property.
Yes, if a bulldozer appears in my side yard, I will be back to see you.
So, all those in favor, um, of what I rattled off, please say aye. Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good night.
So our last order of business are the home rule petitions that Town Meeting recently passed at Town Meeting. Charlie, are you doing the presentation this evening?
I don't think so.
No. That surprised me too.
I mean, I can read off what they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was, uh, um, the authorizing the town of Brookline to amend its community choice aggregation plan. That was more an Article 23. Then, an act authorizing the town of Brookline to adopt green zoning bylaws and regulations. That was Article 25. And finally, an act authorizing the establishment of a betterment loan program for the funding of electrification initiatives in the town. That was Article 21. So, this was debated heavily at Town Meeting, and it was passed by Town Meeting. And we have a long tradition of putting it into the form that is required by our state legislature and delivering the will of Town Meeting via these home rules. Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I would just say, I appreciate the, uh, tradition. I'm going to vote for, in this case, for these, uh, but I personally, uh, I have no, commitment to being bound by that tradition in the future. Uh, I think it's important for us to exercise our own judgment over, uh, resolution to come out of Town Meeting for these kinds of things.
I would like to thank Council's Office for putting these warrant articles into that proper form for them to be filed. And was it the clerk's office? Who has agreed to keep track of these home rule petitions?
I, I think that, I think it's both the clerk and Town Council have agreed to kind of.
Oh, yes, Town Council's Office.
Yes.
Yes, John Moresky?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you, John.
Yeah, we've been asked to do that for a while, and, you know, everybody, everybody thinks it's a good idea, and nobody's willing to actually do it. So, thank you. So, I can, I think I can move them all three together. Uh, I move approval of the filing of the following home rule petitions with the state legislature as a result of the 2023 special town meeting.
Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two.
Oh, was it twenty-two? Yes, yeah, I was thinking of. The one last week. Um, okay, so the 2022 special town meeting. Um, and those are the, uh, the ones that I read off earlier. Any further discussion? So, all those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That is the conclusion of our business this evening. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move adjournment.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Miriam. We are adjourned.
All right.